Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Before we get started, I'd like for you to join me and remember the people that are suffering in the world due to the wars, natural disasters, and all the other happenings, and especially remember the Pope that passed away today. Thank you, and now we start our meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission with the City Council. My name is Sina Najad. I have the honor of chairing the committee, and with my capable fellow commissioners, I welcome you here. Please make sure that you would silence your cellphones, and when you're up here speaking, you limit your talk to three minutes, and we have a great meeting. So with that, please go ahead and call the roll.
Chairman Najad?
Yeah?
Commissioner Beatty is absent. Commissioner Jabar?
Present.
Commissioner Jabea is absent. Commissioner Javed?
Here.
Commissioner Linton?
Here.
Commissioner Macon?
Here.
Commissioner Noyola?
Present.
Commissioner Senegar is absent. Thank you. I'm sorry, alternate Commissioner Sorrell.
Present.
Thank you.
Great, we do have a quorum, so the minutes of the last meeting, updated March 17, 2025, was sent to all the commissioners. I would entertain a motion to approve and/or note any changes or problems with the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Great, let's get started with the PZ 2025-47, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon to you.
Ben Tristan of Fitz and Shipman requests to amend and approve a preliminary plat of Whispering Heights, Phase Two, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. The planning commission approved the preliminary plat with conditions on March 17, 2025. It was identified that a waiver to the minimum right-of-way width of MMTAS drive is necessary for Phase Two of the construction process to proceed. Mr. Tristan is requesting approval of a waiver to reduce the required right-of-way width of MMTAS drive from 60 feet to 50 feet. While this request pertains to Phase Two, it is noted that the city and the developer discussed the importance of adequate access for emergency services or vehicles in future phases. As a result, the developer agreed to increase the right-of-way width of MMTAS drive to 60 feet in Phase Three, and updated master subdivision plan reflecting this commitment for Phase Three is included in the packets. The Phase Two development is located north of Rayhan Wood Street. It's a five-acre development and will include 18 new residential lots located within the residential single-family zoning district. The proposed streets to Here Wood and Yasmin Wood Street will have a 50-foot right-of-way with a 27-foot pavement width. All lots will access Point Parkway via extension of MMTAS Drive and the existing Rayhan Wood Street. Water and sewer services will be provided by extension of city utilities. Planning staff recommends approval of the waiver and the request with the following conditions: number one, revise the street light layout plan with the construction drawings to comply with the city's subdivision regulations; number two, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program; number three, relocate the sanitary sewer service connections to be offset from the telecom and energy easements for blocks five through seven, as shown in detail of H29 of the submitted construction drawings; number four, submit an updated master subdivision and drainage plan prior to the final recordation of the plat. The area outlined in red on the screen is the area under review. This is an aerial image. Preliminary plat, and also the master plan that I had discussed earlier. I believe that the applicant is present.
Well, let me ask you a question. This is Phase Two, right?
Yes, sir.
Why is it that we're allowing them to change Phase Two and not Phase Three to 50 feet?
So, again, to improve the access for emergency vehicles, I do believe that we have engineering here, Julie Hammond, but that was the intent, is to make sure as we get further into the subdivision that we're creating the access for emergency vehicles.
Understanding the intent, why is it when we have an ordinance, we're changing this from 60 to 50? If it's in the ordinance, we shouldn't be changing it.
Well, no, sir. The ordinances are in place, so ordinances are in place, and sometimes a waiver is necessary due to certain elements, right? So in this case, Phase One was approved with a 50-foot right-of-way. Now that shouldn't have been improved in past or approved in past, however, it exists. And so now they're in the construction plans, and it was noticed that that should have been requested ahead of time. And so to not further burden the developer, we're trying to work with him, and in working with him, we discussed the necessary right-of-way width for future Phase Three, and which he was amenable to. So that's the intent, but waivers exist. Waivers exist because not every parcel, every plan, everything fits to your normal cookie-cutter regulations, and so that's why waivers are there.
Can you go back to that other plan that shows Phase Three, please?
So Phase Three?
The one with the red, there's one with the red lines on it, right?
You're talking the aerial image?
That is the area in concern, right?
Yeah.
And we couldn't move that red line up another 10 feet? That, who owns the whole property?
I believe it's Dr. Kareshi, but he can correct me if I'm wrong in that.
So everything above it is, belongs to the same owner?
Yes, sir.
So why couldn't they move it another 10 feet?
I'm not understanding your question.
This is not directed to you. What I'm trying to figure out, if we have ordinances, we see this all the time coming through, let's change the cul-de-sac length, let's change this, let's change the other one. If we have ordinances, we should really try to stick with them, especially if the land's available, and they could have done it.
So Phase Two, which is the one that you're looking at, outlined in red, that's the one that's currently under construction. They came back because they, it's an expired plat. That happened in March of 2025. And so whenever they came back, it was realized that after they've already begun construction, they should have sought a waiver to begin with. So this is a little bit of a retroactive approval, but we're trying to get it right so that they have no issues moving forward.
If I may, so as it relates to the ordinances, those are essentially guidelines. The whole purpose for this board is to determine whether or not a waiver exists such that you can supersede the ordinance, whether or not you feel like there's something about it that could give way for you to consider something outside of the ordinance. I think the ordinance is a minimum guideline for staff, but you, the board has the ability to review and determine if you feel like there's something that would allow for you to go outside of that, either to reduce it, to extend it. So that is within your authority.
So?
If you feel that it's necessary, but that discretion is up to the board to determine if you feel like there's something that allows you to operate outside of the ordinance.
Sure. We do that on sidewalks.
All the time.
Sometimes when physically it's not possible, but the land is there, and it seems to me that, well, anyway.
Yeah, so just, I was just trying to address the question as to like, why would you go outside the ordinance, just for the people who are watching? You, that's within your authority, but it's just whether or not you believe that that's an assessment.
You know this every time we meet is because somebody wants a variance.
Absolutely. They want to see you.
And we might as well take the ordinance, throw it away.
No, they're coming to see you. That was good, come back.
That's a really good one, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I understand the ability to have a certain kind of flexibility with respect to waivers, and that's good. And perhaps maybe we could get the property owner to tell us why we're asking for it.
I perfectly agree with you. I do not agree with accommodating an owner just because he doesn't want to spend the money or he wants to make the property shorter. And I don't blame the owner, he's the engineer, that's probably not advising them properly and say, look, this is the ordinance unless there's something really important, we shouldn't be playing with it. But with that said, thank you, the city's doing a great job. I just, I'm getting a little frustrated with the stuff that comes through, and it's all just because of economical reasons.
I understand.
All right, so any questions for Demi?
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, go ahead.
On clarification, you said that this was passed before?
It was.
But it wasn't corrected at the time that it was passed?
Correct. So this was passed, I believe, yeah, it started in 2022, they received their construction drawing sets. At the time in 2022, it should have received a waiver as well, if this is the plan that they wanted to do. So right now, the development's underway. I believe that Dr. Kareshi can tell you exactly how far along it is, but in order to proceed, they need to renew their preliminary plat, which is what they did in March of 2025 with conditions. At the staff level, it was noticed that they should have also received a waiver, and so that's where we're trying to come into compliance so that we can allow him to complete his development, and we did speak with him on the necessity of a 60-foot right-of-way moving forward, and then that's why we included that master plan to show you guys that that is his commitment, because it shows that right-of-way in Phase Three, which is not for review today, but it's just to show a future commitment.
So he didn't get a waiver in 2022, and you're looking at the waiver now, but his permit expired, so he's reapplying?
Yeah, the preliminary plat expired, and so in our ordinances, a preliminary plat is approved, they have 24 months to complete it. Should that, should that 24 months elapse or go on, then they have to come back and renew it before they can do a final plat. Final plat means that that's the final recordation at the county, so it's now created lots.
Demi, do you have a picture of the site?
Yeah. Of like, on the ground?
Yes.
I do not.
I just need to know how far they are.
I believe it's fenced off back there because of the construction, but I do know that Dr. Kareshi is here, and he can explain how far along he is, and we also have the engineer.
Dr. Kareshi seems like you have all the answers. Where is he? He was here.
Dr. Karachi.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you today?
I'm fine.
Good. If you would introduce yourself and the address and...
First thing, I am not Dr. Kareshi, my wife is Dr. Kareshi. I am engineer, I am Mr. Kareshi.
Sorry about that.
Well, hey, buddy, you were just elevated to doctor, just be quiet, say okay.
Thank you.
People die for that.
Mm-hmm.
Or people get killed for it, right? All right, so tell me what you have and what are you doing?
Ben?
Did you give us your address for the record first?
Yes, 5080 Oakmont Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Okay.
My name is Taher Kareshi.
All right.
Yes, and I'm Ben Tristan with Fitz and Shipman in Beaumont, Texas, 1405 Cornerstone Court.
All right, tell me, why is it that you didn't design this to comply with the ordinance to start with?
Well, back in 2012 is when Phase One was submitted and constructed over the years, and then so on Phase Two, we submitted the preliminary plat for the continuation of that dead-end stretch, which is already at 50-foot right-of-way. And so the next phase of Phase Two was continuing the 50-foot right-of-way up to a point where another access point was going to be connecting towards Point Parkway, which that right-of-way was extra wide, 70-foot with the boulevard, and so it was going to be a continuation of the subdivision.
I understand that, but you still haven't told me, why is it 50 feet, not 60 feet?
That was submitted at the time, it was reviewed and accepted, and even constructed at that time.
But that was, but now, you don't have a permit, you don't have the whatever we're asking for in here, and we should have started all new, shouldn't we?
I mean, right now, there's about 50 feet of roadway constructed already, and so then...
More than 50 feet, two lots, it's 140 feet.
And did you have a permit to start that?
Yes, mm-hmm, and it was constructed back in, on the Phase One of, the Phase One was accepted back in 2012.
Yeah. So three quarters of the road is already there, so it's like, only one lot, then the third phase is start. So just for one lot, we cannot go and widen the road, we already have 75% of the road is 50 feet, and we are...
You can always widen the road, you add five feet to either side of it.
No, we cannot do it.
But look, I know you've done it, the city's agreeing with you, but I just don't want to see engineers coming in here, drawing stuff for people, and telling them to go ask for a variance, that's just not good.
Well, the, once we get past the intersection of Taher Wood and Kareshi, that will continue north through possible commercial side and even to connect to Northwest Parkway, that will be up to 60-foot right-of-way to the north.
All right.
And the rest, you know, down south will be all residential, so, I mean, it's a small, small subdivision, I think it's still within, Phase One was less than 60 lots, it's only 49 lots now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for the folks? Thank you, sir. Demi, this doesn't require public comments, does it?
No, sir.
All right, folks, we heard from the staff, and we also heard from the owner and his engineer, and I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion for approval of the waiver in addition to four conditions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Demi, thank you. I hope you understand this is not pointed at you or what the city's doing.
Yes, sir.
We go to PZ 2025-96.
I think it's 85, is that? 25, 25-85?
Yes, ma'am, it is. Apologize. PZ 2025-85.
Yes, sir. Stacy Garza of South Tech Surveyors and Engineers on behalf of ITEX is requesting approval of a replat of a portion of Lot Two, Block K, Thomas H. Langham Estates, abstract 871, sorry, 871, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas, into tracks two A and two B, TH Langham Estates Subdivision, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. The intent of the plat is to divide one commercial lot into two. The area outlined, I'm sorry, staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions: number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utility for water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and/or fog program; number two, the developers shall provide sewer facilities in accordance with the standards and specifications for minimum sanitary sewer requirements on file in the Office of the Water Utilities Director for the city. Staff did send 24 property owner notices, we received zero in favor and one in opposition, however, opposition did not state why they opposed. It was a mail-in. On your screen, the area outlined in red is under review. An aerial image, and the plat. And I do believe we have the applicant present.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? And the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. How are you?
I'm good.
Yeah, come on, it's okay. Would you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Matthew Cook. My address is 6095 Ventura Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Oh, you're the son of great Mr. Cook, the accountant?
Yes, sir.
I just recognized you. How are you?
Doing well, it's good to see you. He's, he's good, made it through tax season.
You tell him I said hello.
I will.
Good, tell us what you're about to do.
Yes, so I'm working with ITEX, and we wanted to split these into two tracks and develop tract two A, and that is on the agenda for later in this meeting, but it would be a small office and warehouse development to, you know, provide about 3,000-square-foot spaces to local business owners.
Okay, you understand the two conditions that the city has stated?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Great, thank you, sir. Any questions for the gentleman? Nope? Ask him something. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, ma'am. Hi.
Hi.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Happy to. My name is Paige Rideout, and my address is PO Box 3905, Beaumont, Texas, 77704.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Some of the questions follow, I think, the guidelines that are given. One of my questions is, it's obviously zoned for commercial, if that's going to ever change, I wanted to know if that was part of it. The replat, is this negatively going to impact my property? We're on the other side on Langham Road, so would like to know what the drainage is and the privacy that will now be opened up to a larger audience. One of my main questions is, what is the development plan for the drainage? I know that this area is prone to flood. We live in a beautiful place of southeast Texas, but hurricanes tend to disrupt things.
And your property is vacant currently?
That is correct, yes.
All right, so you're wanting to know if the commercial can be turned into something else later on, and you want to know about the drainage?
That is correct, and the utility lines that run through there, if there's any issues that run, we have a, DD6 has a drainage easement on that side, and there's also a pipeline that runs through there as well.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
Those are my questions, thank you.
We'll chase this down for you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this case? Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Can you answer those questions? If you don't mind, just come up here, and if you don't, you just say no, and then we'll get Demi to help you.
Okay, I, so in our original plans, let's see, we do have a, plans to build a 175,000 cubic-foot detention pond at the, towards the, let's see, southeast portion of the property. There is still going to remain a 100-foot tree buffer at the south end of the property between Kelly High School and this track. The east side of the property, which is adjacent to her property, we are not set to clear or do any site development at this time. All, all of the development that we're planning is going to be to the west along Wendellin, and that's about all I have.
So you have net zero effect because of the pond?
Yes, sir.
And your intended intent for this, you say commercial, but what are you guys thinking of building there?
There'll be metal buildings with, they'll have about a 500-foot square-foot office in each, and then the majority of the space would be, so, a warehouse space, so a typical unit would be 3,000 square feet, about 500 to 600 of that would be office, the rest warehouse.
Thank you very much, and utility, you probably don't know, we need to talk to utility people, but thank you.
All right.
Ma'am, the, good news about the drainage is that they're going to have a retention pond, so you will not be inundated with floodwater unless the rest of the place gets flooded, so, but they will, they will not affect your property. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak for or against this? None is heard, so we close the public hearing. We heard from the applicant, and also the city, and the neighbor, and I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the two conditions?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with the two conditions, and is there, and the second, is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. Now we go to PZ 2025-96, right?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Colby Bracken of Access Surveyors requests approval of a preliminary plat of the West Chase Two subdivision, Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. The development is located west of Sunflower Lane and east of the commercial development at 3100 North Major Drive, which is currently under construction. The 8.7-acre development will include 21 residential lots located within the residential single-family zoning district. The proposed residential street, Musa Lane, will have a 50-foot right-of-way, and water and sewer services will be provided by extension of city utilities. This was not included in the packet, however, it was noted a waiver is required to the minimum cul-de-sac requirement to be extended from 800 feet to 942 feet for Musa Lane. You'll see why whenever I switch to the preliminary plat. Planning staff recommends approval of the waiver and the request with the following conditions: number one, display the proposed street and right-of-way width on the plat prior to final recordation; number two, show an exclusive waterline easement to loop the water from the end of Musa Lane back to Major Drive; number three, add a plat note to state all property owners will be required to construct a four-foot-wide concrete sidewalk adjacent to the street located four feet from the back of the curb. At the street intersections, if applicable, sidewalks are to include construction of a five-foot-wide landing to tie in with concrete access ramps. If any lot is not developed within five years of recordation of the final plat, the current owner shall construct the sidewalk. Number four, add a plat note to state temporary erosion control measures must remain in place until permanent measures are established. Number five, the easement previously obtained for a waterline during construction of the Reserve A lot will need to be abandoned prior to acceptance of the Musa Lane. Number six, fire hydrants shall be placed curbside every 500 feet within the new development. Number seven, provide a copy of the approved text stop permit to the planning offices allowing the connection of Musa Lane to North Major Drive. The area outlined in red is under review. This is an aerial image, and it's not on this because Google Earth hasn't populated yet, but to the west of that red line, that's where that 3100 North Major Retail Strip Center is going in right now. And this is the preliminary plat, and I do believe that we have the applicant present.
Tell me about the cul-de-sac one more time.
So, let me see if I can get my mouse over here, there we go. So from here, this point, to here, that's about 540 feet, however, technically, the measurement has to come all the way down to North Major Drive here, so that's in, I think it was about 384 feet, so altogether, I got about 942 feet is how, how long that needs to be extended. Our ordinances allow up to 800 feet, so he will need a waiver to extend that, that length to move forward with this plan.
Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Colby Bracken with Access Surveyors, located at 11025 Old Voth Road here in Beaumont, Texas. I'd like to thank the staff for all their hard work. It was just brought to my attention about the, I guess, requirement for a waiver about the length of the road leading to the residential area. I guess requirement for a waiver about the length of the of the road leading to the residential area. You know, if uh that's some some sort of oversight on my part as the applicant, I should have probably looked into that a little bit more before putting all that together, but um if the commissioners here would like to uh consider that waiver request, I would also like to provide any additional information or answer any questions that you may have.
So on the text dot, uh are you familiar with the whole text dot permit thing?
I am, and we we actually do have that. I was going to wait and see what sort of conditions would need to be applied before updating my packet and the plat if necessary. So we have basically addressed all of the conditions up to date with the exception of the waiver for the extension of the cul-de-sac.
That's a tough one. You don't you don't have a choice, do you?
Well, the commercial development Reserve A, as you see on your monitors, it is significant, so um to to utilize the the lot or the land that's out there for residential towards the back. It it almost seems necessary as I'm looking at it, but uh if we need to, we could remove a few lots, shorten the road if we have to. I do believe the infrastructure that uh is designed for this development will accommodate the the lots and and the commercial property as well.
Okay, I'm I'm not following. What is it you're proposing? If you're short on the cul-de-sac, what is it that you're proposing to do?
Well, I right now I'm proposing to allow you to offer the waiver for the extension.
We have that privilege, right?
But if we do, if we're unable to be granted.
You didn't, you weren't here five minutes ago, were you?
I was, I was. That's why I wanted to be upfront and and honest with you folks.
Okay, Dr. Tome, what do you have to do with this?
I need Tome Golden Triangle Consulting Engineers, uh eighty-five I ten Frontage Road, Beaumont, Texas seven 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 oh seven. I'm the design engineer on this one and uh I disagree with Colby. We do not want to shorten this cul-de-sac and Beaumont lose four lots that have half million dollar homes on them for the next hundred years, so we definitely do not want to do that. And and I understand the technicality of the road starting down at Major Drive, but in reality, that cul-de-sac starts once you pass the shopping center. In addition, this is gonna be a shared access driveway as well that might serve other properties in the future that are owned by Mr. Parigi just on the north side, so we would like you all to approve this variance if possible and help Beaumont grow with more people living here.
Demi, what what say you? You you approved it, right? You 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 agree with it?
Yes, sir, I agree with it. Um, I don't think that there's much um wiggle room because he doesn't own the property to the north.
And he now technically doesn't look like he's he's able to uh even if you cut two or three lots, he still has to have a turning place, right?
Correct. And you know, the the way that the strip center has been built, um there's no access to the south side either. Um, it's really, it's really this this area for adequate space. And if you go back, um, you know, if they wanted to do anything with this property over here, it is zoned as residential single-family, so they would have to consider rezoning if not um
Well, they could, they could buy Parigi's lot number three, but the price just tripled. Right?
I mean, a lot of the
Well, thank you, guys. Hold on, any questions for the folks? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this doesn't require public comment, so uh we have heard from the uh city and also the applicant and we do understand their issue. Uh, with that said, I'll entertain the motion.
Motion to approve with the seven conditions.
Second.
Do we need to add in the waiver?
Uh, well, there is another, there is another, there is the conditions and
Yeah, so you would need to list the waiver if you wanted to consider the waiver.
Was, do I say the waiver or do I do I need to specify what the waiver's for, I'm assuming?
You need to write it down in cursive.
Haven't done that in a while.
A waiver, a waiver to the minimum cul-de-sac requirement to be extended from eight hundred feet to nine hundred and forty-two feet. So I think I just said it on record, so you could probably.
All right, let's try this. Motion, a motion to approve with the seven conditions and the waiver that Demi just said.
Yes, sir.
That's okay. We'll 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 figure that. Thank you, sir. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. This job would have been a lot greater if the pay was a little bit better, you know? All right, let's go to uh P Z two oh five two zero two five nine eight.
Nine seven.
Nine seven. Nine seven.
Faust Engineering and Surveying is requesting approval of a preliminary plat of Emerald Point subdivision located at sixty-eight twenty Griffin Road. Conditional approval of the plat was issued in May of twenty twenty-three and the development is currently under construction. However, no final plat has been recorded and therefore prompting the renewal of the preliminary plat to be in compliance with the code of ordinances. Uh, staff recommends approval of the request and the waiver that was associated with the original request. Um, and we do have the uh applicant present. And on your screen, the area outlined in red is under review. Aerial image and the preliminary plat.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Demi? Mr. Faust? Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Richard Faust with Faust Engineering and Surveying. My address is fifty-five fifty East Tex Freeway, Suite O in the wonderful city of Beaumont. We are under construction right now. Uh, utilities, some utilities are in place, the detention pond on the east side has been constructed. The waiver is for the two lots that you see on the right-hand side of the preliminary plat. We're restricted to a hundred foot depth on the lot, so we oversize the width of the lots in order to make a acceptable uh building area and to meet the minimum area requirements for a lot in the city of Beaumont.
And you have those uh four pipes that are going to the retention, right?
Yes, sir. If they're not there, they'll be there.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Faust? Mr. Faust, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've heard from the owner and also the the city. And uh I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve file P Z two thousand twenty-five dash ninety-seven.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. P Z two zero two five dash nine eight.
Richard Faust of Faust Engineering and Surveying is requesting an approval of a preliminary plat of Wolf Creek of the Wolf Creek subdivision, sections two through four Beaumont-Jefferson County, Texas. The applicant is also seeking a waiver to reduce the rideaway with requirements from sixty to fifty feet for the extension of Dillon Drive and Big Bend Drive in section two. The twenty-one acre development is located north and west of Dillon Drive and extends further west to Chamberlain Drive. Construction will begin at section four and work its way backwards as to not impede with daily activity within the built neighborhood along Dillon Drive. The inter, the entire development will produce seventy-six residential lots in total. The development will include detention and greatly improve connectivity to the existing neighborhood by increasing access points from one to three once completed. Planning staff recommends approval of the waiver and the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water water utilities for water and sanitary sewer improvements, including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and or fog program. Number two, add a plat note that all trees and shrubbery along, I'm sorry, all trees and shrubbery located within the utility easements are subject to removal. Number three, add a plat note stating temporary erosion control measures must remain in place until permanent measures are established. And number four, add a plat note that all property owners will be required to construct a four-foot wide concrete sidewalk adjacent to the street located four feet from the back of the curb at street intersections, if applicable sidewalks are to include construction of a five-foot wide landing to tie in with concrete access ramps. If any lot is not developed within five years of recordation of the final plat, the current owner shall construct the sidewalk. The area outlined in red is under review. Aerial image. And this is the preliminary plat, so you'll see on the screen down here um is section four, section three, section two, they intend to begin down here. All of this area is built. And it's also built at a fifty-foot rideaway. Uh, we do have the applicant present.
Okay, so what is our logic for aligning him to go to fifty from sixty? Because they they were fifty to start with?
Yeah, they were fifty to start with and so to to allow the contiguous um rideaway to allow it to to go and be continuous, um that's one of the reasons for the rideaway, but I'm sure that um the applicant can also speak more to it.
All right, Mr. Faust.
Have a copy of that preliminary? The one that uh the original?
Okay. If I may approach the bench?
Please. This is the original plat master plan and plat of the subdivision. And as you can see, the original plan was to come all the way around to cul-de-sac. We went to a Thursday meeting with the city, with the department heads, and realized that when this is approved, we only had one exit. So now if you look at your drawing on the screen, it, we would have come all the way around to this cul-de-sac on the bottom part of the of the drawing. We, in our meeting, we agreed that we needed a second exit. So my client is in the process of buying the property that runs on Chamberlain in order to provide a second exit. In addition, we also recognize that we need a sixty-foot rideaway. But since it was originally planned as a fifty, we talked with um engineering, not trying to put words in their mouth, they certainly have can disagree with me if if not, but we agree that it was best to go ahead and continue the fifty-foot until we hit that first cul-de-sac or turn around there in the left-hand top corner and then go sixty feet the rest of the way.
Okay.
So we provided sixty feet the best we could. We have some drainage easements. Part of our detention pond is in the rear of the property. And we needed space to put a ditch deep enough to carry the water and still maintain three to one side slopes and have some sort of a bottom in it. That was the uh discussion we had with the engineering part.
Thank you. Mr. Faust, you did great. Any questions for the gentleman? Did everybody hear that? You happy? Great.
I have a question real quick. Um, can you go back to the um the area where it shows like commercial residential? So is he buying all the purple, I'm assuming?
He is. Um, that actually is going to be um
Move it later in the meeting.
And I realized I needed to add a, thank you for bringing that up. I realized I needed to add a condition um that approval of this um prelim, this plat is conditioned or contingent upon a successful rezoning of that portion of the G C M D portion, which is being considered on this same agenda at a, in the joint public hearing.
I'd like to see you add that to the Any questions for Mr. Faust? You're gonna write it for him, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we heard from the city and also the applicant and uh I would entertain the motion. Anybody?
A motion to approve with the five conditions, adding the fifth condition being that uh the zoning is changed to residential?
Second.
Well, it it's it's contentious on them purchasing the other property and rezoning it.
It would be both, yes, but
Okay.
He doesn't necessarily have to own it, but he would need the um the signatures, which he's already received, um so the owner is aware.
Perfect, thank you. So we do have a motion, we have a second.
Is that with the waiver?
Yes, ma'am. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. Well, the Honorable Mayor West, I'm just about tired, so it's your turn. We're gonna start with a joint meeting with the city council and the Honorable Mayor West is gonna lead us into that.
There, there's one more agenda on the regular. There's two more. There's the Parks Plan and there's also the Special District.
My stuff's all messed up. Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, here, I found it. P Z two oh two five one oh one?
Yeah, so it should be, next up should be P Z twenty twenty-five dash one oh one, and that's for the uh request to review and adopt the parks for all Beaumont's playbook for Parks Recreation and Green Space Master Plan.
All right, great.
Check your responsibility too.
You've been really nice so far. Just had to get started.
Gotta keep it lively.
It's gonna be three minutes.
Oh, I'm looking at my what they give me. I'm just paging through these things. They put them in the book backwards.
They should have put this last.
We're gonna hear from the same people. Fantastic, thank you. Well, good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, guys.
Would you please introduce yourself and then we get going?
Awesome. Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name's Julian Salas-Porson with Half. My team and I have been working the past year on your Parks Master Plan. I can't be more excited to share the final draft with you guys today. Like Demi said, it's Parks for All Beaumont's playbook for Parks Recreation and Green Space. I'm gonna kind of go through about a ten-minute presentation with you guys, um kind of give a high-level review of the plan. And I'm gonna bring on another team member of mine to describe kind of some of the improvements and vision that we have for Terrell Park. And then um we'll open it up for questions from you guys.
Please proceed.
Let's talk parks. I don't have any variances or anything like that to deal with you guys, so it should be pretty easy. This picture's pretty awesome. It made it on the cover of the plan. But really, this slide's about why plan now, so park plans are multifaceted master plans that can help a lot of different things. Um, you know, this plan is gonna help guide future expenditures and improvements to the park system, help programming, help the operations and administration of of Kenneth Horgut and Jimmy Neal's departments, as well as um be a toolkit for the entire city to use to really create a new vision for the parks here in Beaumont. Um, I will add, these these plans also assist in um environmental aspects and helping preserve and prioritize the the kind of the the non-built world, our our beautiful environment that we have here in Beaumont, um that everybody loves. These plans help to preserve that as well. I I gotta take this picture, Terrell Park playing disc golf um at sunrise, um the very first day that I actually kicked off this plan with you guys, so it was a really cool experience for me to have in the park. We took a kind of a four-step process to this master plan, so we, uh like I said, we So we, like I said, we started a year ago. We really got kicked off in the summer. I was tasked with walking every corner of every single park in Beaumont, which that's about 40-ish properties and facilities. Once we were conducting that, we've got our steering committee together and really started that public engagement. And that took us from summer of 2024 through winter of 2024. And really, the culmination of those two steps of the process, we were assessing your park system, we were listening to the residents here, and that was really what created the framework for the recommendations and the implementation plan that you see in the master plan today. So we've been working on the report production for the last few months. I can't be more excited to share it with you guys today. We think the plan looks really sharp, so I hope you guys agree. A little bit of overview of the community engagement. We got touchpoints with over 600 different residents in Beaumont over the course of those few months of public engagement through the survey, which we had nearly 600 respondents for. We had two community meetings. We had three focus groups that were broken up into a sports and recreation group, a city staff and local officials group, as well as a local communities group. That was really what kicked off the visioning process for us at those focus groups and then getting to go to the Fourth of July celebration and talk with people that the survey was live, and then getting to do an open house at the Lakeside Center, which was really awesome. I absolutely loved the event center property over there, especially getting to celebrate Fourth of July. But some of those key takeaways from our engagement included desire for better park maintenance, more inclusive and accessible amenities, and enhanced family-friendly and active recreation opportunities. I would say our public engagement was a huge success. Don't ever get bogged down on 583 numbers. That's a very, very stellar number to get for a survey. And Tracy Kinnick with the Communications Department was absolutely awesome in getting the word out and helping us kind of market this plan when we needed help with the public engagement. A little bit else of what we heard. On the right there is a table from the plan where we were looking at how many mentions of park activities and amenities were getting mentioned in question 14 for the survey. Walking came up a lot in a lot of the different public engagement events, walking, hiking, in-park trails, the hike and bike trails, and people wanted more of that. Some other things that we saw were improving existing park facilities, improving the picnic areas, and creating more active recreation opportunities. And so what we saw was there was kind of some places, there was a lack of access, and so these people that are wanting things might not have it in their 10-minute walk shed from their neighborhood. And it was great to kind of get a list of top 10 things. That list goes on to 15, but to know the top priorities that people kind of want to, things they want to do and see in the parks is a great starting point for those goals that we're gonna go through later. Steering Committee. So we had a 15-member steering committee appointed by the mayor and city council. These were all Beaumont community members from various backgrounds. We met three different times. Their sole purpose was to help guide the plan's direction. They served as a voice of the public and were ambassadors for the plan. That first meeting, that kickoff meeting we had, was a visioning workshop with them in August of 2024. It was well-attended. We really got the ball rolling on what's in the park system today and what do you guys want to see to literally, to get us to the second meeting in November of 2024, where we got to debut our initial findings and then get to workshop with them the goals and recommendations, which then later made it into the plan. The steering committee had a great part in identifying those for us with the help of our project team as well. And we're meeting just in a couple hours from now for our last meeting with them. I'm really excited. We've been doing the last two meetings at Terrell Park at the Nature Center, and that beautiful historic building that you guys have has been really inspirational, so I can't wait to get back in there with them tonight and see what they think about the plan. All right, I'm gonna go through a couple of the key findings from some of the needs assessment that we did. The first big thing that we needed to look at for the city of Beaumont was where you guys size up to how much parkland you are serving to the residents here in the city. The National Recreation and Parks Association sets guidelines of all communities across the country for all sorts of things, parks and recreation related. For the national average of total park systems, it is 10.6 acres per thousand residents. You will see, funny enough, that Beaumont is sitting at 10.6, and the total park system acreage for communities 100,000 to 250,000 is seven acres. So what does that tell us? Beaumont is sitting well above the national average. We're above the median. We're creeping into the upper quartile. And that's great. That means we have a lot of parks. We've got a huge park at Terrell Park. We've got other large parks like Colliers Ferry, but we also have a dispartment of medium and small parks throughout the city. Like I said, about 40 facilities. The big takeaway from this table on the left is that you will see some surpluses and some deficits. What we need to do here, since we have enough parkland acreage, is maybe kind of rebalance some of those. So you'll notice neighborhood and community parks are in a deficit. It's already on y'all's community investment plan of two new additional community parks coming online by 2030. That's gonna help alleviate some of that pressure. And we have some recommendations in the plan for additional neighborhood parks being hopefully constructed by some of the development community that you're seeing here today. So it's a great number to be at, 10.6. In total, 1,100, almost 1,200 acres in the entire system. That's much more than I'm used to. And when I say I gotta walk all of them, I literally walked all of them, and what I saw was really beautiful, lush and green parks that have just the ability to turn into a lot of different things, which was really cool. So you guys also have a lot of classifications, which is unique, and we wanted to preserve those for you guys, so that's why there's so many there. Some other key findings from the assessments. There's not enough parks within walking distance. We found out that on average, 71% of Americans are within a 10-minute walk to their neighborhood park. It's only about 30 to 40% of Beaumont residents that have that type of access. And so there's recommendations and maps in the plan that can explain where to put these parks strategically to help alleviate some of those access issues. I mentioned earlier, trails was a huge component of what people wanted to see added. The city is currently in a nine-mile deficit when you're comparing those NRPA standards. So we can definitely add on to those hike and bike trails. A lot of people were actually looking for some more improved in-park trails, which I noticed during my assessments were really popular, people walking at Klein Park and some other parks in town that they really liked the walking trails at. There was also many parks that lacked restroom, shade, trails, and ADA compliant features. There's a need for more programming and event spaces. And we did a health assessment in the plan that took census tracts and kind of used a series of attributes to give a health score, a health outcome to. There are certain areas of town, just like any city, that were kind of in an insufficient deficit of some of these health outcomes. So there's definitely opportunities to use parks as tools to improve health outcomes in some of those underserved areas that we noticed as well. All right, so the steering committee and staff had a big role in helping us craft these goals for Beaumont. What I've kind of been thinking about the last few months is the residents and staff that helped us throughout the community engagement and some of the touchpoints that we had with city staff really helped to build this plan, Half really put it together for you guys. So these goals are really community-driven. The steering committee had a great time kind of developing these four high-level, overreaching goals that are going to dip down into a lot of different other categories as well with the objectives that we have for each goal. But those are kind of our four main buckets there. Park system investments, park access, programming, and gotta have operations and maintenance so Kenneth can have an easier time maintaining this big park system that he's got. I'll go through a couple of, I'm gonna go through the goals in a little bit more detail now. So goal one, invest in Beaumont's park system, become recognized as a regional standard for great parks. These objectives are here to tackle this goal. There's also subsequent actions and recommendations under each objective as well, sometimes up to five to eight action per objective to help tackle the entire thing. So it's a kind of a ladder up. You would see things in this goal like park branding, beautification efforts. One of the biggest things that we have in this goal is transforming Terrell Park into a regional destination. Not only is this plan looking at holistically the entire park system, both parks departments, but it's also looking at targeted huge projects that you guys could look to implement in Beaumont to kind of take you guys to the next level. So this goal is really becoming the regional standard for parks in southeast Texas. I want people to kind of start thinking about Beaumont as a place they would love to take their family to Terrell Park for an event instead of Houston, like it usually always is. So that's what that goal is kind of encompassing. Goal two, Beaumont's parks will be safe, comfortable, and accessible for all throughout the public engagement. Unfortunately, we heard a lot about safety and comfort issues with folks in town using the parks. We have created this list of objectives to kind of tackle not only that concern, but also some accessibility concerns. People were looking to have some more parks designed and maintained to cater to diverse needs and abilities, as well as tying in a lot of camera systems to hopefully the real-time crime center that you guys debuted with your police department last year, to have some just more eyes and a little bit more oversight on the parks and kind of alleviate some of that stress that people feel about it, going to them feeling unsafe or uncomfortable. So I'm really excited about this plan, or about this goal. This one's gonna really take you to a higher level of activation within the parks. This will really get them activated and people out there more. This, goal three is for programming. Encourage healthy lifestyles and social interactions through community events and programming. This one, we heard a lot about programming needing to be focused on youth, teens, and older adults and seniors. What these objectives are looking to accomplish is things like community gardens and nature play and diverse recreational programs for all ages and abilities. And one thing that we noticed that Beaumont residents love was nature, and you guys have incredible outdoor spaces. And so that objective to providing programming that connects people with nature, really in Terrell Park as well, and Colliers Ferry Park with the Neches River, and getting kids out and about a little bit more. Goal four, support efficient operations of the Parks Department. Like I was alluding to before, this goal is all about providing both the Parks and Green Space Department and the Recreation Departments with the tools that they need. This is gonna include recommendations like staffing and staff trainings and park, let's see, guidelines for standards for parks departments and the park design of certain parks that are gonna be improved. But number one was really about expanding public awareness, so trying to tie it into goal one, too, if we're becoming the regional standard, we also need to bolster up our marketing for these parks and how we're going to voice them to the public and get people more to come to Beaumont's parks and enjoy exactly what the residents get to see every day. I've heard a lot of great things. I only got to go to the Fourth of July event, but I heard about so many events in town that are really popular, especially some of the ones in Terrell Park. Okay, so after our goals and recommendations follow, we have now a new list of community investment plan projects. We identified about 20 of them. We presented them in the plan next to your existing CIP list that are Parks and Recreation improvements related. So when you open up the plan, you'll kind of see both of those. And what we're hoping is to get some of these projects that we've identified in our process intermingled into the existing CIP list to make their way into some of those improvements and get the ball rolling. What we did for our projects that we identified was we set them out by tiered, so there are priority one, two, and three. There is a kind of a medium, or sorry, low, medium, and high maintenance level requirement budget outlook. And then there is how we tied it into why it's important to be on this CIP list for you guys. So we took the Beaumont strategic plan that you guys currently have. We took our assessments that we did, and we took the public survey, and we actually identified where those came from, whether it's aligning with your strategic plan or public survey, or both, or all three of them at once, just to tie it into the importance. So the bulleted list you're seeing on the screen is some of the priority one projects, like adding security systems to all park properties and facilities, and then some of those signature upgrades at Terrell Park, which I'm actually gonna bring on another colleague of mine, Casey Collins, to go through some of those Terrell Park visioning and graphics that we have now for that park. But another thing that we had on there was kind of creating a master signage and branding plan for the system. And we're talking about taking Beaumont's park system to a new level. A fresh look is gonna help. You guys have already started with some of those new park signs that you see around town, those park entry signs, and really updating everything to that standard is really gonna take you guys to the next level. So there's some other things on there, like replacing playgrounds. We did an entire conditions assessment. When I walked the parks, I was grading everything on a huge metric, matrix that I have, about 20 different, or 15 different categories on. And so we were able to identify exactly which playgrounds you guys need replaced so that Kenneth can put those on a priority list and get that started. So we're really excited for the CIP list that we got for you guys as well. To wrap up, I don't know, I'm going quick. And we'll have questions at the end, but to wrap up for the plan, the last thing is the implementation. So we have in there every goal, objective, and action listed out. Hopefully, you guys got to review the plan already. That is also tied into timeframe and community, either organizations or city departments that can help execute those actions in the plan. So who to look for first, and the timeframes is important. But at the end of the day, this plan is a huge toolkit and guide, and we know it's a lot. We know that there's, I think we have over 80 recommendations in this plan, a lot of assessments, a lot of maps to look at, and it's a big thing to tackle. This master plan's gonna take you guys five to 10 years into the future. Some cities are even updating every five years, just depending on growth and development in the city. And so we are really trying to take a multifaceted approach to this. My planning team was the one who created this document for you guys with the help of the staff team and the help of the residents. We had Casey's team, the landscape architecture, he's team leader of the landscape architecture team in Houston, and he was the one in his team tackling the concept plan for Terrell Park. We have now brought on in the last few weeks, now that we have a final draft, Half, we have our own grants and funding resources team, and we have brought them on to kind of identify those next steps for you guys. Because just handing this off and saying good luck is not good enough for us at Half, and so we want to make sure that you guys are set up to really execute and implement the entire plan over the course of the next decade. So we're excited to have some follow-up meetings with staff to show them some of the information and identification of grants and funding sources for the entire master plan. So, and some of those key projects like Terrell Park. We're gonna go through the Terrell Park graphics real quick with Casey, and after that, we can open it up for questions, and we'll go from there.
Good afternoon. I'm Casey Collins, landscape architect with Half. We're excited to show, debut for you improvements that we've designed for Terrell Park. I think it's important to keep in mind that this is one large vision. By the end of the day, this will change a million times. So it's enough to show you what the full potential could be for the park. And so with that, I'm gonna dive in. Little bit of a synopsis. This part of the park is located south of the existing golf course. And so what we wanted to do is give this a sense of place and give it its own primary entryway sort of destination. So you see that roundabout would serve as a bypass direct connect into this part of the park. You can see the park features many trails, a perimeter trail. It's really broken up into three segments. We have a passive area, which is shown kind of on the plan right, and then really an activated hub. An area of detention separates the two views that you see there, and we're proposing these pods of parking lots along the perimeter. So as you use the space, you can choose to go to each of the different parking lot pods, and you see the spiral walks all tying into the more active space. The idea of the spiral walks is to provide users panoramic views of the park, including, we're proposing monument walls, which would help tell a story. And so each of those spiral walks may have a theme focusing on the history of Beaumont, famous people of Beaumont, culture of Beaumont, and so trying to give it a lot of variety. I should probably say this makes the most sense to me, so if you have any questions, just let me know. So this is another shot of that main entryway, the roundabout, all centered up. We're proposing an observation tower to take the shape of an oil derrick. And then you see to the right, we have a playground area, splash pad. You can start to see the semblance of an amphitheater, and then the existing tennis courts. This is another view, kind of looking the opposite direction. And so again, you can see splash pad, the trails are all connecting, you can see the monument walls. Another bird's eye view, you can start to see that slanted monument wall, which would feature a lot of text and content about the community. And we have an animation, which I just clicked the button. Just click the button. Where'd you go?
Like a minute long, sorry. Just to help you guys visualize some of those perspectives from a more 3D view.
from a more 3D view. Like Casey said, some of those different experiences, I think is gonna be very unique for not only just a park in Beaumont, but in general, I've never really been to a park with different experiences that are running through, depending on where you park. And so that's something that we really wanted to hone in on.
That's all?
Yeah, that's it.
Any questions, guys?
So like, when you guys are talking about like different experiences, I'm assuming for different age groups, right?
Yeah, so the intent would be, you know, for the splash pad area specifically, you have different age groups, same thing for the playground. But the experiences as you're walking along those larger trails would be having signage that is all themed for, say, the history of Beaumont. And then another, one of those four spiral trails, another one maybe educational about the context of the site itself.
So like, my question would be like, I mean, on the safety aspect of it, I went to school in U of H and everything like that, and we had Memorial Park, we'd go to often. The biggest thing we would see over there was that kids would, you know, wander off. So how would you like kind of restrict that from happening?
So specifically in the active areas, we would have some type of fencing, some type of barrier, especially around the parking lot areas. So just to sort of contain in that activated space.
And like the tower you're talking about, it's like, I'm assuming it's like, is it an active tower, or is it just like for decoration?
It's an observation tower, so you would be able to climb up to the very top and get really nice views of the entire Tarrell Park area.
Just kind of playing off that spindle top theme.
If I could-
Talked to the city's insurance company yet?
I haven't got that far yet, sir.
If I could add to that, you know, they could always, as planning goes on, look at some kind of shrubbery or hedge, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be just a fence. You can always do some kind of landscaping to kind of contain certain areas.
Right.
I think parents are ultimately responsible for their children's behavior, but I've seen a lot of PowerPoints in my life, and many of them have no power and no point. But you guys have done a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Impressive.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience?
Yes, sir. And that was the most southern. Yeah, if we can go back. We're using kind of that teardrop southern tip of the park, and so none of the golf course will be impacted by that. There might be a few disc golf holes that are impacted, but not the golf course itself.
Golf course entrance is on the far left. Park users go through the golf course. We want to create a secondary, which would be the primary entrance for this part of Tarrell.
Well, thank you very much, guys.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Commissioners.
All right, Ms. Tammy.
And so Planning Staff does recommend approval of the adoption, or review and adoption of this plan. So if you guys could make a recommendation to approve, approve with conditions, or deny to City Council, then City Council should consider that in mid-May, this plan.
All right, you heard the lady, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, file PZ 2025-101.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any in opposition? The ayes have it, thank you. So this was the 112, right?
Yeah, so 112 is what we're gonna review next. That one that you guys just approved is 101. Okay, so this, I'm gonna present guidelines that I had drafted and do kind of a general introduction of special districts to the commission. However, I will ask the commission to not consider or to table the item, so I can further fine-tune the document. So just really kind of a general information. So City of Beaumont has developed comprehensive guidelines for the creation and evaluation of special districts to encourage development and revitalization efforts within the city and its ETJ, which is the extraterritorial jurisdiction. Special districts are financing tools to help fund infrastructure and community improvements, ensuring that development projects enhance the quality of life, boost the local economy, and protect the city's long-term fiscal health. So there's four different districts that the guidelines contain. So the first one is a Public Improvement District, or as everyone refers to it as a PID. So it's established under Chapter 372 of the Texas Local Government Code. A PID allows a property owner to petition to the city to finance public improvements through special assessments. So the purpose of a PID is to create, are created to fund public improvement districts, or I'm sorry, public improvements such as roads, curbs, sidewalks, utilities, parks, landscaping, et cetera. Usually these improvements are funded from proceeds of a bond issued sold by the municipality. The next is a MUD, which is a Municipal Utility District. Those are created under the Texas Water Code Constitution or Special Legislative Acts. MUDs finance water, wastewater, drainage, and related infrastructure. They're often unincorporated or in newly developing areas. The purpose is to facilitate residential and commercial development by enabling developers to recover costs through property taxes levied within the district. MUDs can also provide services such as garbage collection. The oversight for MUDs is regulated by the state. The city enforces standards to ensure that the alignment meets our city's goals, so they can create at the state level. They don't necessarily have to come through the city, but it's preferred to discuss through the city. Also for MUDs, they levy, when we talk about all of these things, and there's two other districts I'll cover, but when we talk about it, you heard property taxes, you heard levy special assessments. Those don't go to the city. The city only collects the taxes that have been voted on by council, which is sales tax, property tax, those things. But these are assessments that would go directly to the developer, and they're typically governed by their own board. So the next one is a Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone, or a TURS. And it's enabled by Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code. Council just considered this for their first TURS within the city, so they're a little bit more aware of this. Typically, these are city-led, they're not necessarily developer-led, so just so you're aware. It's again, to incentivize development in areas that would otherwise remain underutilized without public assistance. TURS funds can fund public works such as roadways, utilities, parks, using the tax increment generated from the redevelopment. MMDs, those are municipal management districts. Those are created through legislative acts or petitions to TCEQ, which is the state. These districts allow property owners to tax themselves to fund infrastructure and services. The purpose of them is to enhance quality of life, maintain and manage the improvements such as beautification, security, transit services, and marketing within them. They're almost like their own city in a way. So the key goals of all of those kinds of districts is to improve the infrastructure across the city in whole, diversify the economy. A lot of these incorporate like commercial uses, a lot of mixed-use development. Encourage a high-quality, I'm sorry, I just said that. Maximize the tax base while minimizing taxpayer burden, so existing taxpayers are not burdened by these kinds of districts. So that's pretty key to understand. The guideline goes on to, you know, we would like to consider a $2,500 non-refundable fee. That would go towards administrative reviews, costs, time. In the guidelines, the review team is gonna be a lot of the directors, so it's ensuring that we can cover their time as well. There's the evaluation process, which again, that's that review team, so a lot of it's gonna be the assistant city managers, myself, public works director, fire chief, police chief, a slew of directors in one area to really make sure that, or one meeting to make sure that this is a proposal or a petition that the city should move forward with, and that it's in the best interest of the city. There's debt service districts and cash flow PIDs as well to make sure that there is no burden to the taxpayer. If they want to establish something with a, if they want to establish a district that requires any debt service, they're going to have to make sure that they pay for those services. So an escrow account would be set up with the city, and they would replenish that account as needed for the entirety, or the entirety existence of their special district. So like, the common district is a public improvement district that we'll probably see at this city's level. So normally those go on for anywhere between like a 15 to a 30-year period. They kind of mirror a mortgage. So basically, they would have to keep that escrow account open with plenty of funds in there if we need to contact any legal, financial advisors to help us through that process to make sure that the city is covered. Also, if they're approved to form, they will have to enter into a development agreement. The developer must enter the binding agreement, which assures the city delivery on, assures the city delivery on the promised development and a sunset clause should the developer fault on the project. There's also financial safeguards in there, such as like a cap on the equivalent tax rate. So I believe our, well, what's been proposed in these guidelines is that they cannot exceed $1.50 per $100 of assessed value for any debt service. So this document is still being reviewed by our financial advisors to ensure that all safeguards are presented within it. So that's one of the reasons, too, that I don't want you guys to consider this one, because I want it to really go through multiple eyes and make sure that it's right, and that's how we should proceed as a city. All bond-financed improvements must undergo competitive bidding as well. There's no improvement that can be considered in one of these special districts that isn't accessible by the public or that is a public improvement. It can't be like a private street neighborhood with a private park. It has to be open and accessible to the public. Any, so let's say, for example, kind of give some examples now. A public improvement district is proposed within the city. Typically, these developments are highly amenitized. So like, let's say for a residential subdivision. Normally, these have like trails in them, they have parks, they have high-quality infrastructure, they have street landscaping, all the things that really promote a high-quality, I'll put in quotation marks, maybe a master planned community, those kinds of things. These assessments are, they're basically put across each lot that is in there. So you can kind of look at it as if like a HOA fee at the end of a year or a property tax. This tax is only to the people that buy within that neighborhood. And it is only collected, the city acts as a pass-through to give that back from the tax office to the developer to reimburse them for that development. So these aren't, I don't want you to, these aren't like regular neighborhoods that come through typically with these-
So it's like the stuff like, like in Katy, Texas, there's a subdivision obscene like this? Is it like where the pool, there's like a private pool kind of thing for just that neighborhood?
But it wouldn't be private. It would be open to the public.
To the public or just that neighborhood?
It should be to, so it would be in the neighborhood, but it should be accessible to the public. That's how, if it's gonna be like a public, like the city is going to endorse it, it would have to be like a public amenity. And so I just, the main thing with these PIDs is that we've had, and the reason I'm even bringing these guidelines to you guys is that in the past year, we've had developers come to the city asking about them, if the city's interested in them, and all those kinds of things. So I've been trying to prepare ourselves for a petition to be received, or should a petition be received, that we have guidelines or expectations in place for these developers. And so I want to be clear that these developments need to have some kind of amenity, especially if there is an assessment that's levied on them to enjoy those amenities within their neighborhood. You know, one of the things, not necessarily that it's gonna be private, but you know, if it's a pocket park that's within the neighborhood, it's a neighborhood park, right? Like those individuals or property owners within that area are especially benefiting from them, right? Because they're within walking distance. And you know, Julian just talked about that with Half and Associates, having more accessible parkland and playgrounds and things like that. So really, these guidelines are just to establish, establish the expectation that the city of Beaumont has when we receive these petitions. Again, not asking for, not asking for you guys to consider today. And I'm not sure if it has to be tabled or not, but I would like to further fine-tune the document and bring forth something that you guys can adopt here, and hopefully in summer.
Thank you. So Counselor, we take this as a presentation and don't have to take any action?
I don't believe that there's an action being requested.
No action requested, but I would, I do believe that we have some developers, so I would like to hear any questions, comments from y'all, if there's anyone that wants to speak on special districts or anything like that. If there, no one wants to speak, then that's fine.
Any comments?
Well, as the guidelines, I assume that as this progresses forward, this is gonna come before us again, an individual?
Yes, sir, it'll come to you guys for a formal adoption. Especially, too, because we are gonna, I am looking at impose, or not imposing, assessing a application fee with it as well. So that will have to be considered by y'all and also counsel before I can have that, before I can assess that.
Thank you, Tammy.
Actually, I have a question. So these special districts, I'm assuming there's gonna be boards on there, correct?
There's gonna be what?
Like boards, like for some of the MUD and all that. Is it gonna be appointed, or is it gonna be elected?
That's actually within, so typically, and you know, we have a developer here that's pretty well-versed in them, but they all have boards, and they're appointed with that board, and I believe that they have to go through them to-
Tammy, tell them where there's a MUD now. Hidden, Delaware, and Allen.
There's a municipal management district. Yeah, there's a municipal management district. It's not, it's not been improved yet, but that was, I don't know the timeline, but that was considered maybe two years ago at this point. So hopefully, there'll be some movement there.
The gentleman-
Gentlemen, ma'am, my name is Jerry LeBlanc. I'm with Binnacle Development. Give you the backstory. So I'm the one that I currently have a petition in with the city to create a PID.
Would you state your address for the record?
Sure, sorry, it's 11210 Bloom Avenue, Suite 200, Houston, Texas, 77034.
Go ahead.
So you're talking about Katy. Binnacle Development, we put a lot of lots on the ground for public builders, private builders, Katy, League City, Friendswood, Pearland. We have some just infill, but we also have master plan communities. The, so I am, yes, Houston. I am from Port Arthur, grew up most of my life at 6750 Guest Road, off Old Both Road. So a lot of my builders said, hey, Jerry, we need development in Beaumont. Would you please go to Beaumont? Absolutely, I know most of the streets very well. I'm buying some property at Northwest Parkway and Point Parkway, and we're going to put in approximately 800 to 1,000 homes, very quickly. We believe we can chew through about eight houses a month, and these homes will be in the price point of $295 to $375. What the homeowners are going to receive, it's a master plan community, masonry perimeter fencing, internal trails, internal walking trails, biking trails, golf cart trails, parks in different locations, parks for two-to-six-year-olds over here, parks for eight-to-12-year-olds in a different location, splash pads, swimming pools, rec centers. And the way we're able to provide all of that to the homeowners, but still keep their house $295 to $375, is through a PID. And I need a glass of water to answer all your questions about a PID, but a short version is a PID allows the homeowners to take advantage of the city's financing rate. Because if we put all of that money into the lot and into the house, then the consumer would have to- then the consumer would have to get a mortgage, seven and a quarter percent, and finance everything. All they're really doing is carving out the portion of the extras and putting, and financing the extras at the city's bond rate, whatever your municipal bond rate is. That's really all we're doing. And there's different mechanisms. We can put it in a PID or we can put it in a mud. I personally prefer the PIDs because it costs the homeowners the least amount of money. It's the most efficient mechanism. Because again, we're wanting to give someone all of those amenities. And we're, by the way, all of our, we have an application for our master plan that will come in Wednesday. And all the roads are sixty foot rightaways, there are several parks. It's a true master plan development. And that's how we're able to give the consumers all of those amenities and still be at $295 to $375.
So the money is collected by the city and dispersed or how is?
No, the money is collected by the tax assessor collector, once a year.
For that location?
Or only for that specific location. But as Demi said, Demi's correct. Technically, everything's open to the public. It's public streets, nothing's gated. Somebody from Old Both Road wanted to come over and use a splash pad, no one can kick them out. But it rarely happens, just because of proximity.
Until the neighbors block the gate?
Or run them off with paintball guns, yes.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
So in MMD, municipal management district, and I'm not going to call myself an expert at all in it, so I can definitely research it and get some more information on it and bring it to you guys at a later date. But their, MMDs are created in legislation or they can petition to the TCEQ. So technically, they don't have to go through the city. But it's really good to work with them to make sure that we're getting the development and things like that, that aligns with city goals, which is one of the reasons I wanted to include that in this document. Although this document speaks more towards PIDs and TURs and things like that, I want to make sure that it's in there so that developers understand what our expectations are. MMDs work more like a, like a city in a way. They levy their own assessments and they apply that to maintenance and operations. Where PIDs, they're a little bit more structured, I guess, in a way. They stay with that property for however many years, they never change. And Jerry, correct me if I'm wrong, but they never change, I'm sorry, Mr. LeBlanc, correct me if I'm wrong. They don't change, they stay the same every year. So let's say in an MMD or a mud, they have a certain improvement that they need to make to their, to their infrastructure, then those rates could change for those property owners. But a PID stays the same on each property.
That's correct. I wanted to speak to everybody, including you. But, so from a consumer standpoint, an MMD or a mud is very inefficient. With a mud, you have a board, that the board members get paid every month. You also have monthly meetings, you have to pay for the meeting site. You pay the attorneys, the tax assessor collectors, the bookkeeper. Everyone has a hand in the pot. So with a mud, only about thirty percent of the proceeds actually go back to pay off the amenities. And with a. Mud management district, same, kind of same thing. They're different entities, but they operate the same way. Yes, sir. And what Demi was referring to is municipal utility district or municipal management district, MMD. There's a tax rate. Let's say the tax rate's one percent. So if your home is valued at three hundred thousand, your tax rate's three thousand. But home prices double every twenty years. Homes naturally, they increase 2.6% a year. So in twenty years, now that three hundred thousand dollar home is six hundred thousand and you're paying a one percent tax, now you're paying six grand a year. With a PID, it's fixed. It's fixed for thirty years. So if you start off paying one thousand in year one, you pay one thousand in year ten, one thousand year twenty, and your last thirtieth payment in thirtieth year is one thousand dollars. And after thirty years, it goes away. Most management districts and muds, the intentions are for them to dissolve. Very rarely do they ever dissolve anymore. Because cities use them to maintain detention ponds and, and, you know, move stuff off of the city's budget onto the utility district's budget. But that's a big point, the difference between a PID and a mud.
Good. Thank you very much. All right. Mayor, you ready? We're gonna have the Honorable Mayor West get us started on the joint meeting of the planning, zoning and the city council, please.
Welcome, everybody. This is a joint meeting of the forums of the city council and the planning commission. This will be the only opportunity you can speak on these items will be today. The planning commission will make recommendations to the city council. The final third day will come before the city council, the next available agenda for a decision. And there will be no public hearing at that time, at that city council meeting. Today. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Did you call the roll?
He didn't ask for one.
I did. I was checked.
Why, it was either me or she's gonna start on you, one of them.
He checked for a quorum. He didn't call. Nice try.
Mayor West? Mayor Potem Neeld, absent. Councilmember Durio, is absent. Councilmember Felschaw, is absent. Councilmember Getz? Councilmember Samuel? Councilmember Turner? Thank you.
Thank you, folks. We're gonna get started with PZ 2025-65, please.
Yes, sir. Eric Ardwan is requesting approval of a specific use permit to operate a residential care facility at 2326 Roman Street. The facility will be a private pay home offering room and board in a safe sober living environment for men in recovery. It will provide eight beds across four shared bedrooms with all common areas shared. The home is intended to support residents as they transition from treatment by helping them secure employment, participate in the twelve step program and attend religious services. The property is zoned residential multifamily highest density and located in a mixed use area that includes residential, industrial and commercial uses. The RMH district permits a range of residential types with a specific use permit which allows for uses such as recreation, religious health and educational facilities. While the proposed use generally aligns with the goals of revitalization, the city's traffic engineer has raised concerns about parking. On-street parking is not available and the property owner must ensure that the parking for more than two vehicles does not obstruct traffic flow or neighboring properties. Additionally, Mr. Ardwan submitted a letter with the proposal stating that no sex offenders shall reside within the home at any point in time. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, the property owner will be responsible for ensuring that vehicles do not obstruct neighboring driveways or restrict the traffic flow. Number two, the applicant shall submit a parking plan approved by the city's traffic engineer to ensure that emergency vehicles can safely access and navigate the roadway. Number three, shall obtain an approved certificate of occupancy from the building official. Should alterations or repairs to the structure be required, all construction shall comply with applicable city codes and complete all required inspections. Number four, shall install a eight foot wood privacy fence along the eastern, northern and western property line encompassing the backyard to provide privacy measures to nearby single family homes. Our staff did send out twenty-nine property owner notices. We received zero in favor and two in opposition. Opposition summarizing, basically stating they hope that there's no drug use or sex offenders and are generally concerned for their safety with establishment of this. The area outlined in red on your screen is the area under review. The site plan or the survey. Subject property. To the east. To the south. And to the west. And I believe that we have the applicant present as well.
Can you show me the subject property one more time? Okay. So there's a spot for what? Two parking?
Currently, in that driveway, that's what it appears. So they would have to submit, you know, a parking plan that conforms with the city's traffic, or. What is the word I'm trying to say? Applies, yeah. Applies or conforms with our city's traffic engineer standards. And it looks like it's a five bedroom home.
It's four.
I'm sorry, it's four.
Thirty-five by thirty-nine.
And again, the applicant is here.
Great. Any questions for Demi? And the applicant? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If you would come by and tell us what this project is about, so we can visit with you.
Yes, sir. I'd love to.
All right, great. If you don't mind, state your name and address for the record, please. Yeah, come on, come on up, it's okay.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, sir, go ahead. Your name and address?
My name is Eric Ardwan. My address is 2655 Harrison Street, Beaumont, Texas.
All right.
7702.
Great. And tell me what you're about to do.
Well, we've been underway now for about four months. The home was established as a transitional home. I have open door policies with every treatment center in Beaumont. Have a connection with the homeless. I'm an advocate for the homeless here in Beaumont. And so this house is actually helping even formerly homeless to transition. I have one that was homeless. He's working now. He has a job. He's self-employed. He's paying taxes. He's a productive member of this society. As far as the parking, we can do three cars. But to be honest with you, most of the guys don't have vehicles. They're coming out of a treatment center, maybe they had one at one time, maybe their license has some issues. So not, we've only had two vehicles since the start of this home. So we've never really obstructed any driveway or any kind of, you know, traffic through there. So, so far, so good on that.
All right. So you've been operating here for how long?
Yes, sir. About four months. I'm the manager, is what I do. I just manage it. I oversee it. Like I said, there's an application process that they go through. We check to make sure they're not registered or, you know, we don't want registered sex offenders there at all. I'm sorry. It's just, we have guys that have children that are trying to build a life and their kids come visit them there. So it's, we want it to be a safe environment.
I see that you signed your name as Pastor Eric Ardwan.
Yes, sir.
Pastor, what experience do you have in operating this? And the reason for that is I want to know what problems we're gonna get into.
Sure.
If you don't know what you're doing.
Yeah, okay. So I'm a product of a sober house, a transitional house. I actually managed one on Liberty Street for about twenty-two months. So I know all the ins and outs and how it works. We do random, random or suspicion drug tests. They're required to make twelve step meetings. I do an in-house Bible study there. I make sure, I do random check-ins with the guys. Well, to be honest with you, most of them go to the church I pastor. The church that I pastor, our congregation, is eighty-five percent homeless in a treatment center or in a sober home. So that's what, I've been dealing with that group of people for a really long time now. And so I know how it works and I know how the community would think that. I can tell you this much, the one I manage, there's a principle in this. So I tell the guys, you have to kill your neighbors with love and kindness. You just have to. You have to be a good neighbor. Ms. Peggy lives right next door to us. Ms. Peggy sends canned goods. We pick her paper up. If it got thrown not close enough to her door, we pick it up, we put it at her door. If we take the trash out, we take hers out. It's just what we do. I went around, I knocked on doors. I didn't have anybody that had a problem with it. I explained to them very clearly that, you know, this house is a no drug use policy, period. If you get caught, you're out of there. We haven't had that problem.
So do you have a manager that lives here or?
I am the manager.
And you're gonna live there?
Sir, no, I don't live there. Now, I have, I have an individual who's been there since the birth of it, that is more or less kind of like an overseer.
So there is an overseer?
There is someone there, yes, sir.
All right. Are you familiar with the four requirements that the city has?
No, sir.
The one in here about responsible for ensuring the vehicles not obstruct the neighbors and parking and also the fence? And all that good stuff?
Okay, so, so do I need to put a wood fence up? Is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so.
You need to look at this report that the city has and requirements for it.
Yes, sir.
Do you want me to reread the conditions?
If you don't mind.
Sure. The first one is the property owner will be responsible for ensuring that vehicles do not obstruct neighboring driveways or restrict traffic flow. Number two is that you need to submit a parking plan approved by the city's traffic engineer to ensure that emergency safety vehicles can navigate the roadway. Number three, obtain a certificate of occupancy from the building official. Make sure you come up to second floor so we can help you with that. Should alterations or repairs to the structure be required, you just need to comply with all the applicable city codes and required inspections. Again, we will help you through that. Number four, shall install a eight foot wood privacy fence along the eastern, northern and western property line encompassing the backyard. And so what I mean by that, we'll go to this one. What I mean by that is encompassing your entire backyard, so all the way around here.
Okay. So all three sides and maybe a gate on both sides or what have you. Okay, I understand.
So now, any questions from gentlemen?
Yes. I'm looking at this, it says eight beds across four rooms. And since you don't live there, they're going to manage theirselves? I assume that you're trying to put eight people into this facility?
We've never had eight. Right now, we stand at five. We've never had eight since the birth. I don't, I don't really push that. I just kind of let the good Lord send who he needs there. And, but like I said, we've never been full capacity. I don't think we'll ever be full of capacity.
How, what's the size of the facility?
It's a, so it's a four bedroom house. So in each room.
Fourteen hundred?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not a huge house, but I mean, it's a, it's a four bedroom. All the bedrooms are same size except the master bedroom. The master bedroom has a walk-in closet and a master bath. There's two baths, four men share one bath. If there was eight, they would share the other bath.
And do they stay there all day or do they leave, go to a job, come back?
I have one man, Mr. David, I say man, he's a little, he's elderly. He's kind of like the eyes and the ears of the institution. He receives a check, SSI. He is home twenty-four seven until, unless I pick him up for church.
So for the repairs are the conditions that have to be met? Do they pay for this or you provide, you pay for this?
Well, as far as the fences, so let me, let me reiterate. I'm the manager. I'm not the owner of the home. The owner of the home lives in Pasadena. His name is David Gutierrez. I'm just more or less, I guess, acting on his behalf because I manage the home. I did all the work in the home. He's an investor. And when I, when I finished it, I shared my past with him and he said, why? You think it'd be a good sober, a transition house? I said, I think it'd be an amazing place to transition.
So he pays you to manage the house?
What he does is depending on the occupancy, if I had eight in there, I could stand and make about three hundred and sixty dollars. But I could care less about the money. I'm there because I love these guys and I want to see them get the same blessing out of recovery that I've been able to get.
Okay. And the owner, how often does he visit this facility?
Uh, we conversate on the daily, but coming down once every month, give or take, something like that.
Demi, does Mr. Gutierrez need to know about the conditions as opposed to Pastor Ardwan?
The conditions are limited to the applicant, not the owner. So Mr. Ardwan, or Pastor Ardwan is the applicant. And so if the applicant is unable to satisfy the conditions. And so if, if the applicant is unable to satisfy the conditions because the property owner chose not to do it, or because he chose not to do it. Then they would just be an unsatisfied condition, in which case they wouldn't get the permit.
You're part of the permit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I can, I can assure you that that fence will be up there within a week.
Well, before you leave, I, I need you to understand, if I was you, I would go to the city upstairs and visit with them and the fire marshal because there are very strict. Requirements for, uh, fire alarm and fire marshal wants to know how fast you can. Yeah, you know, leave the building in case of fire and all that. Before you spend, spend any more money on this, you need to make sure that you have a permit in hand.
Okay.
And you can satisfy those.
Sure, I understand.
I've got one more. Mr. Ardwine, what's the average length that your residents stay?
Well, so, I can tell you, so, so we've only been there four months.
Right, but you're at another facility, so I figured you probably had a good idea.
Yeah, and I'll explain, so, we just had, uh, one, one, I call him brother, August, he went there, uh, about three and a half months ago. He stayed long enough to, for God to restore the relationship, excuse me. With his child that, uh, and then, and his wife, and now they have a place together. Um, some stay because. Maybe they're, they're settled so much that they have a, like a fear, maybe, of stepping out just yet, and they wanna make sure that they. They're ready to go back out because it's a tra- excuse me. It's a transition from either a treatment center, we don't take anybody that comes out of prison or anything. These guys are coming out of treatment centers, and so it's a transition from that element. To that, where they can learn to stand on their own two feet and work and pay taxes, and then go out and be, you know, live in society, so. Uh, the length of stay varies, I mean, I now. I was, I was on the board of the house center for three years, and those guys, some of them guys have been there eight years, living there. So, but we're not set up for that, we're not long-term, I mean, we're just a transition.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So, I, I have a question. So are any of these people working right now, or are they just transitioning completely?
They are all working except Mr. David, but he receives a check.
So do they get picked up and dropped off, or how do they get?
Some, two have vehicles currently, they drive themselves to work, to and from work, uh, the others Uber. Or, I go, we got two bikes, and they ride the bike.
Mr. David is your manager at this house?
He's kinda like the eyes and ears, yeah, Mr. David's there twenty-four seven, seven days a week, twenty, the only time that man gets out is when I pick him up to go get some groceries or take him to church, which I'll pick him up here shortly.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, now. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? Good afternoon, ma'am. How are you doing? You've been sitting there patiently.
Oh, you're a long time. Good afternoon.
Well, good afternoon to you.
My name is Peggy Coley. Would you mind putting that picture of Sean's house? Okay, if you turn around, my house is right next door. To the facility. It's that gray, that's my house right there, and you can see how close it is to my house.
Sure.
The problem that I have. Mr. Ardwine. And David Cetera. They start working on this house. Never informed the residents what kinda house this was going to be. They've been there more than four months. To my knowledge, once I start complaining. I get a notice from the city. Now, my question is to you. My neighborhood is a black old neighborhood in Beaumont. We have six residents. You can see how narrow the street is. Okay? So. How would you like? If. Mr. Ardwine and David Cetera find a house in your neighborhood and move these people. And you are not notified. How would you feel? Tell me, how would you feel? I am totally against it. And like I said, it was done because it was in a black, quiet neighborhood in North End. Now, my concern. With this. You have people. In general. Like Mr. Ardwine say. They're in and out. There's no supervision. That's my number one problem. No supervision. We're never notified about anything. So how could the city allow this? I pay taxes, just like you pay taxes. I called him about two weeks ago. And I told him at twelve-thirty AM in the morning, listen to what I'm saying. Twelve-thirty AM, I heard gunshots. My quiet neighborhood. So I informed him of what I heard. He said, oh, they're all with me, we going to Pasadena, we going to church. I said, it didn't happen at twelve-thirty PM, it happened at AM in the morning. We never had that in my neighborhood. Never. I'm not happy. And I do, I hope that. You do not give them the permit since they took it upon themselves to move in and establish that type of facility. Thank you very much.
I have a question for you, ma'am.
Before you get too deep into it, Commissioner, uh, Ms. Peggy, can you state your address?
Oh, I'm so sorry, it's twenty-three twenty Roman.
Thank you.
And the house is twenty-three twenty-six Roman, right next door.
All right, we have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, how long have you lived in your house?
That is, uh. I moved back in two thousand and nineteen, but that is family property, and we've been there since the early fifties.
Do you own your home, ma'am?
Yes.
Do you fear for your safety?
I, I do. I really do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Live by yourself?
I live by myself. I'm a retiree.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sorry that we made you wait that long.
That's okay.
All right, Mr. Ardwine. You're up next, uh, you heard the lady and she has some concerns. And, uh. I need you to tell me. What are you gonna do about what you heard?
I sat, I sat in her living.
Here, you can, you can.
I sat in her living room. Uh, we sat, we had a very, very wonderful conversation about that house, I assured her. Let me, let me tell you where the problem is.
Tell me when you met with her.
Okay, so, uh, it's been about four weeks, Ms. Peggy. Since we, I met you in your living room, then you brought canned goods next door to the guys and all that. So, okay, so, uh. Here's, here's the situation, I don't own the house, when we started doing the work on the house initially. The house was gonna be sold or. Flipped or whatever, we, I didn't. It's none of my business what he does with his houses, but.
So you were the contractor to.
I was the contractor, I did all the work, yes, sir, and so I'm a painter and a carpenter and a pastor, so I did the work on the home. During that process. We, he knew my, my history and my past, and I, he asked me, he said, do you think it would make a good transition house? I said, I think so. So we molded the idea around, uh. You know, I know initially she was upset because he didn't personally tell her what the house was gonna be. Uh. But, and I didn't either, because I didn't know that that's exactly what we were gonna do with it. But when we decided to do it. And she raised some concerns. We had a sit-down in her house, I sat right there with her, um. You know, at that point, I thought she was fine with it, I mean, she didn't seem, her only thing was. That she wasn't told what it was gonna be, but we didn't even know that's what it was gonna be in the beginning.
What do you know about the gunshot?
I have absolutely no idea about a gunshot, I mean, that house is on Roman, huh, I mean, who, could it be, uh, maybe the train tracks right there behind it, I don't know. Nobody in that house has a gun, I mean, that's, that doesn't even make no sense, none of my guys are walking around with guns.
Mr. Ardwine, you never told her that, uh, the house was gonna be used as a sober house?
N- not initially, no, we didn't do it, I didn't do it, it wasn't my house, it wasn't my place to even say anything about it. But when we decide, decided to do it, this has been a process going on for about maybe four months now. That, cause it took, it took me, uh, it took me three weeks to fix the house.
When you decided to do it, did you let her know that the house was gonna be a sober house?
When we started moving in furniture, I didn't let her know. But I apologized to her for that, and I thought we were okay. I don't, you never said anything any different.
Uh, you can address us.
Yeah, I just don't understand what the.
Let, uh, let's, let's go back. When you started this ha- this house renovation, did you have a permit?
No, we didn't have a permit, I did fi- I did go through the process once I got, received a letter. And then I went upstairs and we got everything taken care of, as far as, he paid whatever it was, the six hundred dollars, I don't know.
You being a carpenter and a painter and a pastor, how could you not get a permit to, uh. Renovate the house?
Was his home, all we did was paint.
Well.
Did, did I have, I never had, I've been painting in Beaumont for a decade now, I've never had a permit.
Well, don't say that.
Only in Old Town. Only in Old Town.
You don't need a permit for paint, uh, but repairs, certain repairs, you, it may constitute a permit.
Right, I understand that.
I have a question for you. Um, cause I thought when you first presented, I, I thought you were the owner of the property. And I thought you said you had talked to the people in the area.
We did when I was, when I was told to do it, I didn't know I had to do that.
And.
Y'all, y'all were the one that stipulated I do that, and I did it.
The other part is, um, I think she said there's six, uh, residents in the neighborhood, and you've talked to all six of them?
I, I door-knocked on two that didn't answer, and then the lady that's right there on the right did answer, I talked to the man across the street. So three out of six.
Though you said.
They were okay with this?
Yeah, nobody said had a.
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Though you said that you were there for four months at this facility, and. Now I'm looking at, you're bringing in eight men out of a, a recovery. To go into a house next door to a single lady. Elderly lady, so I. And you had no thoughts that you should have relayed that to anybody for that type of facility?
Well, first of all, there's no sex offenders in that house, so there's, there, there would be no reason for any man in that house to violate any woman. In, in the neighborhood.
So what kind of recovery are they in?
They're drug and alcohol recovery.
And so, uh, still that, you, you, you have a. A recovery center?
Yes, sir.
Doesn't mean that you don't know where that's going?
Well, I can tell you, I'm very much connected to that house, I don't know what she means, but I'm not there, I'm, I get, I'm a phone call away. I pick those guys up four times a week, tonight I'll pick them up when I get out of here, and bust them to the church I pastor, we're gonna do a meet and eat Bible study. And then I'm gonna bring them home, I'm very active in their life over there.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh. Go ahead.
Mr. Ardwine, you do not live in the house.
No, I don't.
Okay. You see what I'm saying? He does not live in the house, that's what we're talking about.
All right, uh, if you don't mind, just go ahead and ask the question, we'll get the answer, we don't want this to be a debate here.
It's not gonna be a debate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate you, someone finally listened to me because this been an ongoing situation. Now.
Look, look, we want you to be comfortable, you have lived in that house, you're one of the neighbors, you have all the rights. So I want you to make sure you understand, everybody in here is listening to you.
Okay, so i- if you look at the tail end of that house, you could see there's another driveway. Okay, long time ago. That people used to use that driveway because there was a house in the back. When that house was built, it was one of the first houses built. From the city, uh, way back, I don't know exactly when because I wasn't living there, my mother, that was my mother's house. That house is now overbuilt on what you call the, it's sparkman. And. I showed David Cetera the original house that was there in the fifties. And, you know, he told me I had to prove whether or not that was my fence. And that fence been there since the fifties. So, I, I'm through, thank you. Okay.
Were you the lady that took canned goods to these folks?
I had canned goods, and he right, he was in my house, when the mayor of Beaumont called him.
So, uh, and then there is gonna be an eight-feet fence between you and his house?
Okay, when you put that fence.
Uh-oh.
I don't want the house there, I don't want those people in my neighborhood.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, ma'am, and thank you, sir.
Yeah, I wanna add one more thing real quick, that fence that she owns, that was all dilapidated and laying over and everything, we straightened that out for her.
All right.
Those guys cut that grass on a regular basis, you will not pass that house, and it looked like a slum house.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, folks, I hate to put this on you, but, uh, we will close the public hearing now, nobody else is volunteering, right? Okay. So, uh, we heard from the owner, we heard, heard from the nice lady neighbor and the staff, so. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to deny?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to deny, in a second, I'd like for you to vote with your hands up, all is a favor, say aye.
Aye.
And raise your hands.
Deny or?
Deny.
Deny.
Deny. All right, thank you, so the motion's denied. Thank you, sorry, sir, I know you have a great cause.
Yeah, I said it worked hard to build their life, uh.
Uh.
I'll be in touch tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. Now. Demi, you are way over your record in here tonight, but we're gonna do it, let's go to, uh. PZ two zero two five nine four.
Yes, sir, Matthew Cook on behalf of ITEX is requesting approval of a specific use permit to allow a commercial warehouse and office park at the property located at. Eleven twenty Wendellin Drive, commercial occupancies such as contractors' offices, retails and professional offices. Are permitted outright within the general commercial multiple-family dwelling district. However, the warehousing and distribution requires a specific use permit, which is why this is, this request is before you. The site is, uh, ten acres and will include fifteen buildings, offering a total of one hundred and five thousand square feet of leasable space. Um, I believe that you said one, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, leasable space earlier, did I get that wrong?
Oh, no, I, it's a hundred and five thousand.
Hundred and five thousand, okay. The project is designed to provide affordable commercial lease space opportunities for small businesses that do not require heavy industrial facilities. It's aimed to support local contractors, small sta- mo- small-scale storage, direct shipping operations and online warehousing for local distribution. The proposed use specifically excludes businesses that would need lay-down yards, eighteen-wheeler access or heavy industrial equipment. Staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer improvements. Including any requirements of the city's backflow pretreatment and or fog program. Number two, construction shall comply with all applicable building and fire codes. Number three, the development shall comply with section twenty-eight point zero six, point zero s- zero six landscaping and screening requirements of the city. Of Beaumont's Code of Ordinances, staff sent out eight property owner notices, we received zero in favor, zero in opposition. The area outlined in red is on your screen. That's under review. Aerial image. Site plan. subject property and north, subject and west, further north, east and south. And I believe we have the property, or I'm sorry, we have the applicant present.
Mr. Cook? Good afternoon again.
Matthew Cook, six zero nine five Ventura Lane, Beaumont, Texas, seven 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 oh six. Yes, so the, the proposed development is to, something that we're looking at doing in phases. Uh, the buildings in total would be split between ten six thousand square foot buildings, these are metal buildings, um, and then five nine thousand square foot buildings. The six thousand square foot buildings would be ideally split down the middle with a, a five hundred and fifty square foot office space in it and then the rest would be used as warehouse space. The nine thousand square foot buildings would be built to, where you could have up to four tenants in a building, they'll have four overhead, you know, bay doors. Um, but we would be able to, you know, if a, a tenant, a potential tenant wanted a larger space, you know, we wanted some flexibility with the nine thousand square foot buildings. We are conscious of Kelly High School to the south and will keep in place a one hundred foot tree buffer along the, uh, entire, you know, bo- thank you very much, yeah. The south part of the property, uh, and then just north of that, so that there's net zero, um, drainage, uh, drainage will be building a detention pond and potentially, uh, you know, have two access points to Wendellin Road as well as a new one that comes in off of, um, the property to the north.
Any questions for the gentleman?
So you only have one dumpster for the whole facility?
That, yeah, that's where we have, we have one dumpster enclosure there now, yes, sir.
So is that for all of the, is it like ten buildings, I think, fifteen buildings?
Yes, sir, right now. Um, we would, we will be developing this in phases. Uh, the first phase will be six buildings, the, uh, the four six thousand square foot buildings along the north part of the property with two nine thousand square foot buildings in the middle. The second phase will be an additional six and then the third phase would be the last three buildings at the south of the property.
So are they gonna be using, uh, my, my question is, are, is the whole site using that one dumpster or are they gonna have like rollaway bins or how do you plan on? Or is everybody gonna have their own dumpster just sitting there in that area?
I wouldn't anticipate everyone having their own dumpster sitting there, but if we need to accommodate for, you know, multiple dumpsters and that's something that we can expand.
Got you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Great, folks, uh, you've heard the applicant and also the, uh, approval from this, recommendation from the city with three, uh, conditions. And with that, I would entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve, PZ two thousand twenty-five dash ninety-four.
Check it.
But with the three conditions, yes.
We have a motion to approve with the conditions and a second, any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it. Uh, Ms. Demi, PZ two zero two five dash one zero two.
All right, last one. Uh, Richard Faust of Faust Engineering and Surveying is requesting a rezoning for the two point four three acres, more or less located at the southern portion of the twenty-one acre tract located north and west of Dillon Drive. Mr. Faust seeks to change the zoning from GCMD to RS, which is residential single family dwelling, to develop a seventy-six lot residential subdivision, which you guys, um, reviewed earlier in the regular meeting. Uh, planning staff does recommend approval of the request. We sent out twenty-eight property owner notices, we received eight in favor and zero in opposition. Favor stating that it's fit- fitting for residential single family zoning and not commercial in that site. Uh, area outlined in red is the area under review. Subject property or aerial image. This is to the east, to the south, to the west. And that's all the, uh, images that we could get from the, uh, public right of way, but I'll go back to the aerial image.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Faust? Good afternoon again.
Good afternoon. You know, we, we gotta do this and get that, to make that preliminary plat work, so I appreciate it. I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Uh, just your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Be good.
Richard Faust, Faust Engineering and Surveying, fifty-five fifty East Tex Freeway, Suite O, Beaumont, Texas.
Good, do you have any additional information, Mr. Faust?
Um, no, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? The other one didn't require it. You're gonna have to, you know, come in front of us next time or the time after, so. Uh, so there's no public comment. All right, we're gonna close the public comment session. Uh, we heard from the staff and also the, the applicant and I would entertain the motion.
Motion to.
Approval.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor?
Jeez.